Good evening and welcome to the 1,153rd Regular Meeting and Public Hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in the audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council, and the City Council after holding their own public hearing will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary plat's and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If the Secretary is ready, we have our... Can we please have the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Bonjero?
Here.
Commissioner Ventura?
Here.
Commissioner Smiley is present. Commissioner...I'm sorry, McHugh is absent, and Commissioner Karamagno, I hope, will be here shortly, and Commissioner Long?
Present.
And Commissioner Wilshaw?
Is here. And yes, Commissioner Karamagno should be here a little later in the evening. Also with us tonight, we have Mark Toramina, and we have Stephanie Reese from our Planning Department, and we will hear from them as we get into the meeting. Again, just for folks in the audience, we want to remind you the format is that with each of these petitions, you're going to hear background information first from our planning staff. We'll then ask the petitioner to come forward and speak to the item. We may have questions for them, and then we'll also have an opportunity for anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak for or against any of these petitions to also come forward during that time. So with that, if our Secretary is ready, we'll start with item number one on our agenda.
Okay. Item number one is Petition 19-12-01-07. It's submitted by Unleashed Pet Care Real Estate LLC pursuant to Section 23.01 of the City of Livonia Zoning Ordinance Number 543 as amended, requesting to rezone the property at 9300 Middle Belt Road. It's located on the east side of Middle Belt Road between Joy Road and West Chicago Avenue in the southwest quarter of Section 36 from OS Office Services to C1 Local Business.
Thank you, and we'll go to Mr. Toramina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a request to rezone property from OS Office Services to C1 Local Business. This property is located on the east side of Middle Belt Road. It's between Joy Road and West Chicago Avenue. The property is a former Terewski Funeral Home. Property is roughly three-quarters of an acre in size. It has 230 feet of frontage on Middle Belt and 141 feet of frontage on the side street halfway. The existing building on the property measures about 4,747 square feet. The building faces Middle Belt. It has parking on the north, the east, south sides of the building, and the purpose of the rezoning is to enable the reuse of the building as a veterinary clinic. The existing OS zoning does not support this type of use, however, the C1 zoning does allow veterinary clinics, animal clinics, and animal hospitals subject to waiver use approval. Looking at the area surrounding the site, to the north and to the south, fronting on Middle Belt Road, are a combination of office and commercial uses. Immediately to the east, our residential homes zoned, R1, one-family residential, and then to the west across Middle Belt Road are duplexes under the R6, two-family zoning. The site contains 53 parking spaces. When we look at the parking that's required for a veterinary clinic, this is based on a ratio of one space for every 150 square feet of usable floor area. Doing the math, the required amount of parking for the veterinary clinic at this location would be 22 parking spaces. That would result in a surplus of over 30 spaces. Most of the site is either building or parking lot. There are minimal amount...there's minimal amount of landscaping presently. The future land use plan does show the subject site as corridor commercial, so it does support the proposed change of zoning. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to read out the correspondence that we have on this item.
Yes, please.
First is a letter from our Department of Public Works Engineering Division. It's dated December 19th, and it reads, "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed rezoning at this time. The existing parcel was assigned the address of 9300 Middle Belt Road. The existing parcel is currently serviced by Public Water Main, Sanitary Sewer, and Storm Sewer. The information submitted does not show proposed alterations for the utility services, so it does not appear that there will be any impacts to the existing systems. It should be noted that should the developer need to do any work within the Middle Belt Road right-of-way, permits will need to be obtained from the Wayne County Department of Public Services." And that letter is dated...signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter of no objection coming from the Department of Finance Office, excuse me, signed by the Chief Accountant Connie Kumplea. She indicates that there are no outstanding amounts receivable, general, or water and sewer, and therefore they have no objections to the proposal. And lastly, a letter from the Office of the Treasurer indicating the same, that at this time there are no taxes due...there are taxes due, but they are not delinquent. Therefore, they have no objections to the proposal, and that letter is signed by Linda Shiel, Treasurer of the City of Livonia, and that is the extent of correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Do we have any questions for our planning staff? Hearing none, and the petitioner is here. If you'd like to come forward, we always ask that you provide your name and address for our record, please.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Carrie Nugent. I currently own Unleashed Pet Care, 8645 North Middle Belt Road in Westland. We've been an established small animal practice for the past 10 years in that location. Prior to that, we were a mobile house call service. We are looking to expand and open an integrated veterinary wellness center at the proposed location, extending services to massage therapy, hyperbaric treatment, and some other alternative veterinary medical modalities.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Nugent. Is there any other information that you would like to provide us in regard to the petition that we have tonight?
In terms of the location, at the present time, we don't plan on doing anything structurally other than, you know, renovating the interior of the building, partitioning for the use as a veterinary practice. So in terms of the external structure, we don't plan to do any renovations at this time.
Okay. Well, let's see if we have any questions for you from our Commissioners here. Mr. Bonjero?
Couple of questions. One from Mark. What's the minimum height requirement on the fence separating commercial from residential? Is it five feet or six?
It's five feet is the minimum.
Okay. So it just makes it...it's a little bit short, but it looks great. The things can get shaved.
Yeah, my guess is that that is the result of additional lifts to the parking lot that probably raised it on the commercial side of the property.
Yeah, it's like three inches short, but I was like, yeah, it's close. I went by your other business. It looks like you guys are real busy over there. It says you do boarding?
We do at the current location. We will not be boarding at the new location, particularly given the restrictions for overnight care in Livonia. We are cognizant that there needs to be someone present at the facility if we do have animals kept overnight. We do not have any intention of doing so. If at some point we get to the point that we need to, we will have the appropriate veterinary staff on site should we need to hospitalize the patient overnight.
Okay. I mean, all of the building's in good shape on the outside. The parking lot, a couple of rough spots back by the planter. I think that's where you're putting the outside...
The green space.
Yeah. So that's going to take care of that. And then you're going to close the other...your other business? Because it's only a half mile down the road.
We're actually leasing that property, so we will be closing that location.
Okay. I like it. It's great. You're really...I think it's a good idea. That's it?
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Long?
Thank you. I realize this is a zoning hearing and not an official site plan, but can you talk a little bit about your intended green space? What, you know, will it be fenced? Will it be real grass or artificial turf? Can you just talk a little bit about that?
We are planning on doing real grass. The area will be fenced. We're hoping in our old location, it's an old house. People in the area really like the homey kind of feel, so we're trying to create that in a new location. So the proposed green space, we're thinking of doing a cute white little picket fence so that it kind of brings into that homey atmosphere, and it will be actual a grass area. We are open to moving the green space if needed, if there is anyone opposed to the location. We do have enough room to actually create several if needed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Long. We'll have the record reflect that Commissioner Karamagno joined us at 7:10 PM. Is there any other questions for our petitioner? Any other questions? No other questions from the Commission? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anyone coming forward. Dr. Nugent, we always give you the last word since you're our petitioner. Anything else that you'd like to say?
Well, we are hoping that we can become a part of the Livonia community. We've heard wonderful things of what a pet-loving community that it is, so we feel that it would be a great location to move our clinic.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Doctor. Appreciate that. If there's no other questions or comments, again, as Mr. Long indicated, we just do want to remind everyone that this is a rezoning request, so we are focused tonight really on the zoning and is that appropriate for the site. Once that's decided, then we will potentially look at the site plan and have more detailed questions at that time. So with that, if there's no other questions or comments, I will close the public hearing, and a motion will be in order.
Mr. Chairman?
I got three people here.
Everybody likes this project.
We'll go with...I heard Mr. Ventura first.
Offer an approving resolution that the request to rezone the property at 9300 Middle Belt Road from OS Office Services to C1 Local Business is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval for the following reasons. One, that the proposed change of zoning will allow the reuse of the building as a veterinary clinic, which is not permitted under OS District Regulations. Number two, that the proposed change of zoning is compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding zoning districts and land uses in the area. And three, that the proposed change of zoning is supported by the future land use plan, which recommends corridor commercial in this area.
Is there support?
Support.
All right. We have a motion to approve the rezoning request by Mr. Ventura, supported by Mr. Bonjero. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing and hearing none, if the Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Ventura? Aye. Mr. Bonjero? Aye. Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Karamagno votes aye. Chairman Wilshaw?
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go on to City Council with an approving recommendation. This is, as I mentioned before, the first step in a multi-step process, so you'll go to City Council for the rezoning, and then based on that, you'll then come back for a site plan in a short time. So we look forward to seeing you again. Thank you for coming.
Again, I do want to note on our agenda for our audience that for item number two, the petitioner is asked to have the item moved to the end of the agenda to work with their timing, so we said that we would do that. Therefore, we will move on to item number three on our agenda under Miss Lady's item.
Petition 2019-08-08-13 submitted by Build to Suit Inc. on behalf of BioLife Plasma Services, requesting approval of all plans required by Sections 18.47 and 18.58 of the City of Livonia Zoning Ordinance Number 543 as amended, in connection with proposal to construct a new medical clinic at 29959 Plymouth Road located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Middle Belt and Milburn in the northeast quarter of Section 35.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. Again, this is a request to construct a new plasma collection center called BioLife. Its location is within the Wonderland Village Shopping Center, which is on the south side of Plymouth Road, just west of Middle Belt Road. This parcel in particular is 2.3 acres in size with 265 feet of frontage on Plymouth Road and has a parcel depth of roughly 380 feet. As you can see from the zoning map, the current zoning is C2 General Business. The subject property is part of a larger shopping complex that is known as the Village Shops of Wonderland. As originally approved, the Village Shops included five buildings, all with frontage on Plymouth Road and extending west from Middle Belt for a distance of about 1,650 feet. Four of the five multi-tenant retail buildings have been constructed, and the proposed BioLife would occupy the last remaining building pad located at the far west end of the Village Shops, and this was referred to as Retail F on the original plans. Retail F, as originally approved, measured about 28,326 square feet and was a multi-tenant building. The proposed single-use BioLife building would be one-story in height and about 14,390 square feet in area. It's positioned near the middle of the property with parking on the northwest and east sides of the building. The site does not have direct access to Plymouth Road. Instead, access would be provided via the existing drive aisles and lanes that are part of the existing layout of Wonderland Village. The building's interior would be divided into three main parts. The front portion would include reception as well as a donor processing area and various exam rooms, a training center, conference, and other administrative offices. The middle section, which is labeled "Donor Floor," contains multiple cubicle partitions, and then the back part of the building, which is labeled...which includes what is labeled as a receiving area, includes a plasma processing area, a freezer, a biohazard room, as well as an employee break room and a changing room. The required setback of a building in the C2 district from a main road right-of-way is 60 feet. In this case, the building would be set back 95 feet from the right-of-way of Plymouth Road. Parking is required at a ratio of one space for every 110 square feet of usable floor area. Accordingly, this facility would require a total of 105 parking spaces. The site plan shows 129 spaces, so parking is adequate to support the proposed use. Behind the building, you'll note that there's a separate access drive for pickups and delivery. There's also a trash dumpster enclosure in this area. It's near the southwest corner of the building. In this case, that enclosure area or that dumpster would be enclosed by three walls of a minimum of six feet in height. The existing lighting within the parking lot would be used. There's no additional exterior lighting proposed, others than some wall packs that would be attached to the building. There's a fully detailed landscaping plan that was included with the application. The landscaping on site totals roughly 25% of the property and is thus conforming. Looking at the building itself, and this is an item that the Planning Commission reviewed in great detail at previous meetings, these latest plans show the building's exterior including a combination of thin brick in two different colors identified on the rendering as white and black. There's also Nihichi or a composite material that's smoked color. That's a rough...it's in the form of a rough-sawn siding. So looking at this plan, you see the brick, the darker brick is the area surrounding the main entrance. The Nihichi material or the composite panel is this material, the horizontal siding, which is kind of a rough-sawn wood appearance, and then the lighter colored brick you can see on this part of the building which flanks the main entry. Also included are dark browns, metal panels, and ephesus. The white portion, which is where the signs are located, would be an ephesus or drive-it material. Signs are limited to one sign, measured at one square feet for each linear foot of building frontage. In this case, they'd be allowed a single sign, 85 square feet in area. The plan or the rendering show three signs, one on each of the north, the east, and west elevations of the building, so that's something that would have to go before the Zoning Board of Appeals for approval. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to read out the correspondence on this item.
Yes, please.
We have a letter dated December 14th, or excuse me, August 14th from the Engineering Division that reads, "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed project at this time. The existing parcel was assigned the address of 29959 Plymouth Road. The legal description provided appears to be correct and should be used in conjunction with this petition. The existing parcel is currently serviced by Public Water Main, Sanitary Sewer, and Storm Sewer. The information submitted does not show proposed alterations for the utility services, so it does not appear that there will be any impacts to the existing systems. It should be noted that should the developer need to do any work within the Plymouth Road right-of-way, they will need to obtain permits from the Michigan Department of Transportation. Once the project has been approved by council, detailed site plans will need to be submitted to this department along with sanitary sewer basis of design to determine if permits will be required." Now, that is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter of no objection coming from the Department of Public Safety Livonia Fire and Rescue Division and signed by Greg Thomas, Fire Marshal. That's the letter is dated August 23rd of last year. A letter dated August 15th of 2019 coming from the Division of Police, also indicating no objections to the proposal. That letter is signed by Brian Lee, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter from the Inspection Department. That's dated September 4th and reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed. A variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals is required for the excess number, area, and height of signs. This department has no further objections to this petition." That letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. Next is a letter of no objection from our Department of Finance dated August 15th and signed by Connie Kumplea, Chief Accountant. A letter of no objection from the Department of...or the Office of the Treasurer dated August 23rd and signed by Linda Shiel, Treasurer. And lastly, a letter from the Department of Assessment dated August 26th that reads, "The above described property is a 7.49 acre parcel under the name of Middle Belt Plymouth Venture LLC. The request by Build to Suit Inc. appears to encompass only a portion of the seven and a half acres. The assessor's office recommends the owner contact our department for a property split." And that letter is signed by Mary Chilano, Department of Assessment, and that is the extent of correspondence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Just a procedural point of order, this item was tabled. We will need a motion to remove it from the table before we...
I move that we remove this item from the table.
Thank you, Mrs. Smiley. Do we have support?
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Smiley, supported by Mr. Ventura. If there's no objection, please show six to remove this item from the table. I hear no objections, so we will do that, and now I will ask, is there anybody on the Commission with any questions for our planning staff? Seeing none, our petitioner is here. Welcome. Good evening, and you're welcome to start with your name and address.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair and fellow Commissioners. My name is Steve Hermiller with Manix Smith. I'm the Civil Engineer. Address is 2365 Hagerty Road, Canton, Michigan. I have with me also tonight the architect.
My name is Nick Slaughterbeck, the architect with Onyx Creative, address 25001 Emery Road, Cleveland, Ohio.
Good evening, gentlemen. Anything else that you'd like to add from what Mr. Toramina's already said?
We would. We appreciate the opportunity to be back. Early on in this process, I think we went through the work session. Obviously, there were some changes that were requested. We came back, and we presented at the last work session some samples, and I'll let Nick speak to that since he brought some different...a full set of materials that he can explain further to go into detail how we advanced it even further, so it explains the nature of the elevation.
Yes. At the last hearing, there was a bit of a worry about the thin brick. We've since switched over to a full brick mainly because of the climate conditions in Livonia. There is worry of a thin brick falling off of a building, as with any cold-hot climate area. Such, we would be switching over to full brick with standard masonry tiebacks throughout the building. As you can see, we have the silverbrook, which is the white and gray brick, as well as a manganese iron spot, which is the darker brick. For that, I don't know if you wanted me to go over the changes from when we submitted back in October. I know there was worry of an institutional look of the building back when that was submitted. Since then, we've really taken a look at Wonderland Village, noticed its delineation and its undulation in the differences in the properties. One of the worries we had heard was that there was too long and too broad of a space. This facade was too bland and too monotone, if you will. As such, we've added more undulation in parapet, more pushing and pulling in the facade, more changes in the materiality. We're hoping that by doing so, we're adding to that visual discrepancy throughout those longer facades that would mimic and at least complement the adjacent Wonderland Village. We went with brick, as Wonderland Village has a lot of the brick element to it, as well as switching from a lot of ephesus to the nichihua, which is a fiber cement panel board. The roughsawn will have a light texture to it, but the gray will still be seen through. And we've limited the ephesus only to our sign banding, as well as adding a few...the storefront windows are...we've maintained. We've also added a few storefronts on the side elevations that would just be standard non-vision glass, as well as a few areas where we've added some ribbed metal panel as well, just to extend those visible windows to allow for more clarity and visibility and less of an institutionalized look, we hope.
Well, thank you for that background. You have made some significant improvements, I think, to the facade of the building, and you've worked well with our planning staff and with us in making those changes, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for our petitioners this evening?
Chairman?
Mr. Ventura and then Mrs. Smiley.
I defer to Mrs. Smiley.
Mrs. Smiley.
I was just going to ask about the landscaping. Was there a landscape plan, and how much of the property is covered with landscaping, Mr. Toramina?
Staff notes indicate about 25% of the site would be landscape, and this is the landscape plan that was submitted with the application. You can see foundation plantings on the front part of the building, so where the main entrance is facing Plymouth Road. You'll note the variety of shrubs going in that area, as well as some ornamental trees. You'll see the same thing along the back part of the property where there's some green space, the area shielding, the actual dumpster would have some landscaping. The only...you know, there's existing landscaping on the site along Plymouth Road where we have the streetscape improvements, as well as along the sides of the property that were all part of the original Village Shops of Wonderland landscaping plan. The only thing is along the sides of the building, there are no foundation plants there. They just indicate lawn, so I'm not sure if that's a concern, but it's a well-laid-out detailed landscape plan.
Okay. And did the PRDA take a look at this?
They have not acted on this petition yet.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
But I will point out that the PRDA's input would be very limited since they reviewed the initial Village Shops of Wonderland plan and had a significant amount of input as went into the streetscape improvements that are in place along the frontage of the site.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smiley. Mr. Ventura?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to offer a compliment to the petitioner. You guys have been very flexible in terms of revising your...not only the physical appearance of the building, but the building materials to accommodate the concerns of the Commission, and you're to be commended for that. I think the building plan as it stands today is much improved.
Thank you very much.
One question that I don't remember ever being asked is, do you employ any security on the site or in the building?
Unfortunately, the landowner or property owner is not present tonight. They had flight issues, but maybe...
That being said, while I can't speak to the employment of security on site, I do know of the security measures that are in place. We do...we obviously meet all building codes, and we do have secure card reader access to the building for employees, secure exits, and of course, fire accessible routes. Again, we do have security contractors who are part of the design process, who do help with the internal security of the building. An external, unfortunately, I can ask, and we can get back to you if you'd like on that issue. that issue.
Okay. And, and I noted all of your information you provided to us, that the donors are paid with a debit card. Is that correct?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know, actually. Because of the flight thing, the owner said they could be on the phone if, if you didn't mind, but I don't, I don't know.
All right. I'll defer, I'll defer that question to another time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. My recollection from our previous meetings was they, they did talk about payment through a debit card. I do remember that, but obviously, it's up to the petitioner to ultimately answer those questions. Any other questions that we can ask of the representatives here?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Caremagna.
I had a question regarding, Mark, regarding the sign. Did we ever find out, and if I wasn't listening, I apologize, about the sign? Did they get signage on the, on the monument sign?
You know, I did not. I was unable to get that information prior to tonight, so I apologize.
But I see in, in the, in the minutes or in the approving resolution here, that they're limited to base signage only. They have to apply for an appeal to the zoning board of appeals if they want more?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you, Mr. Caremagna. Any other questions? Either the planning staff or for the petitioner? I don't see any others. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anyone coming forward. Again, we'll give you the last word. If there's any other comments or statements you'd like to make, you're welcome to.
I did get a text back from the owner. They said there is, it is the debit card payment mechanism.
Kind of love technology.
I don't know exactly about the security, but in moments, you may know.
Okay. All right. We'll, we'll see what happens.
Actually, they did text. They said there's no need to have on-site security. They have security cameras everywhere.
Thank you.
There we go. Thank you for having those questions answered for us. With that, if there's nothing else from either the commission or anyone in the audience, I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Long.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution that this request to construct a new medical clinic at 29959 Plymouth Road is hereby approved, subject to city council approval and the following conditions. Number one, that the site plan identified as C-200 dated October 18th, 2019, as revised, prepared by Manic Smith Group, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, that appropriate recordable legal instrumentation, such as a cross-access agreement, that gives notice and outlines, and outlines the terms of how the subject property would share parking and access with the budding property, be supplied to the inspection department at the time a building permit is applied for. Number three, that the landscape plan identified as C-500 dated October 18th, 2019, as revised, prepared by Manic Smith Group, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number four, that all disturbed lawn areas shall be sodded in lieu of hydro seeding. Number five, that underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas, and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the inspection department and thereafter permanently maintained in a healthy condition. Number six, that the elevation plan dated December 13th, 2019, prepared by Onyx Creative, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number seven, that all rooftop mechanical equipment visible to the public shall be concealed on all sides by screening that shall be of a compatible character, material, and color to other exterior materials on the building. Number eight, that the three walls of the trash dumpster shall be a minimum six feet in height, constructed out of building materials that shall complement that of the building, and that the enclosure gates shall be lubered aluminum and maintained when, and when not in use, closed at all times. Number nine, that all light fixtures shall not exceed 20 feet in height and shall be aimed and shielded so as to minimize stray light trespassing across property lines and glaring into adjacent roadways. Number 10, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. Number 11, that the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time the building permits are applied for. And number 12, pursuant to section 19.10 of ordinance number 543, the zoning ordinance of the city of Livonia, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by city council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support for the motion?
Support.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, we have, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Long, supported by Mrs. Smiley. The petitioner has asked to speak. Go ahead.
I forgot to mention, if the motion passes, is there an opportunity for a request to waive the 10-day process so we could expedite it from the deadline to go to city council?
We appreciate you bringing that up. We do have a note to do that. That will be a separate action after this motion has been voted on.
Thank you very much.
And it's a seven-day waiver, but seven, 10, you know, it's close enough. But yes, thank you for reminding us. Is there any other questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, if the secretary is ready, please call a roll.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Caremagna votes aye. Chairman will show.
Votes aye. Motion passes, and we do have a request for a seven-day waiver from the petitioner. Would someone like to make that motion?
I move for granted seven-day waiver.
Support?
Support.
By Mr. Ventura. We have a motion to waive the seven days by Mrs. Smiley, supported by Mr. Ventura. If there's no objection, I think we can show six on that. I see no objections, so we'll show six to approve that. And we're all set with this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, and we wish you luck on your project.
Thank you very much.
We will go on to item number four on our agenda.
Number four is petition 2019-12-08-16, submitted by NC Designers and Contracting, Inc., requesting approval of all plans required by section 18.58 of the city of Livonia zoning ordinance number 543 as amended regarding a proposal to construct an addition and remodel the interior and exterior of the existing Shell gas station at 33411 Six Mile Road, located on the southwest corner of Six Mile and Farmington Roads and northeast quarter of section 16.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Termine?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request to construct an addition and to remodel the interior and exterior of an existing gas station that is located at the southwest corner of Six Mile and Farmington Roads. This site was recently rezoned from a C-1 local business to C-2 general business. The site is about 21,600 square feet in size. It has 160 feet of frontage on Farmington Road and 135 feet on Six Mile. The existing one-story building on the site measures roughly 1,500 square feet in area, as you can see from this aerial photograph. It is positioned at an angle, about a 45-degree angle from the intersection. There are two groups of gas pumps with overhead canopies, as well as four driveways, two that are on Farmington and two that are on Six Mile. The addition would be constructed at the north end of the building. The addition would also be one-story in height. It would be 578 square feet in total area, with dimensions of 18 feet 9 inches by 27 feet 3 inches. The main purpose is to provide the station which, with additional retail space. Upon completion, the enlarged gas station building would be about 2,085 square feet in size. The required setback is 60 feet from any road right-of-way. The building is 70 feet from the Farmington Road right-of-way and only 45 feet from Six Mile Road and is thus non-conforming. As you can see, the addition would encroach even further into the setback along Six Mile Road. From our estimation, at the closest point, the addition would be less than 35 feet from the property line. And along the west property, where the site abuts OS zoning, the zoning ordinance does allow for a zero setback, provided that the building is properly fire-rated. The building, in this case, would have a zero setback adjacent to the west property line. Again, because the addition encroaches into the required front setback, a variance will be required from the zoning board of appeals. In terms of parking, the required for gas stations is one space for each 150 square feet of usable floor space devoted to retail sales. That translates to a, an off-street parking requirement of 12 spaces. This plan shows, I think, 10 spaces, so it's shy a couple of spaces, and would also require a variance from the zoning board of appeals. Looking at the building itself, this is the rendering. As you can see, the entire facade would be remodeled. The exterior would consist of vertical metal panels, that's the dark brown, composite siding, that's the lighter brown on the top harsh portion of the building, and then limestone panels. There's an existing block wall along the back of the building that would be repainted. And then along the top of the building, it would be finished with a 16-inch-high continuous crown molding that would be constructed using ephes. The roofline, as you can see, would have two sections with varying heights. 17 feet would be the height on the south half of the building. It would be raised a couple of feet to 19 feet on the north half where the addition is proposed. At the study session, it was suggested that the limestone panels extend across the lower part of the ends of the building on the north and south elevation. So when you look at these two elevations, the north and the south, the suggestion was is to carry those limestone panels across the base of the building. Going back to the plan, in terms of landscaping, the plan shows a combination of lava rock and artificial plants in the right-of-way, as well as a small island right at the intersection where the sign is located. Petitioner indicated this was an oversight on their part and that they would upgrade the landscaping, but of course, this, this project, this aspect of the project would have to be refined further. We did not review this petition in terms of signage, so we cannot comment on that. And then lastly, I thought it would be helpful to the commission to show on the aerial photograph what the, what the size of the addition would look like in relationship to the, to the surrounding buildings to the north and give you a better sense of what that encroachment would be into the, into the required setback. So we put this plan together, which is conceptual, but it gives you a, a good idea of, of what the impact to the site would be in terms of the, the addition to the building. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
First letter is from engineering dated December 19th, and it reads, "The existing parcel is currently serviced by public water main, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer. The information submitted does not show proposed alterations for the utility services, so it does not appear that there will be any impacts to the existing systems. It should be noted that should the developer need to do any work within the Six Mile Road or Farmington Road rights-of-ways, permits will need to be obtained from the Wayne County Department of Public Services." And that letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next, we have a letter of no objection coming from the Livonia Fire and Rescue dated December 23rd and signed by Greg Thomas, Fire Marshal. Next, letter from the Division of Police, Public Safety Division or the Traffic Bureau Division. This letter reads, "I have reviewed the plans in connection with the petitions. I have the following objections to the proposal. There is only one parking space provided for handicap parking. My other concern is regarding the placement of the only available handicap parking space provided for access to the building. It is my suggestion that the handicap parking space be moved to the area of the labeled number one and number two parking spaces shown on the blueprint. The proposed handicap parking space would force the disabled patron to traverse around two sides of the building, which could pose a possible safety hazard for the handicapped person." That letter is signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau, and it's dated January 10th. Next is a letter from our inspection department dated January 7th. It reads, pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed. One, only one restroom is shown. Two restrooms are required per the Michigan Plumbing Code, based on the proposed occupant load. This will be addressed further at the time of our plan review if this project moves forward. And number two, a variance from the zoning board of appeals is required to maintain the deficient setback proposed for the side yard. This department has no further objections to this petition. That letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. Next is a, a letter of no objection coming from the Department of Finance dated December 19th and signed by Connie Kumpala, Chief Accountant. And lastly, a letter from our Office of Treasurer dated December 23rd that reads, "In accordance with your request, the treasurer's office has reviewed the name and addresses connected with the above noted petition. At this time, there are taxes due. Therefore, I have no objections to the proposal." And that letter is signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the city of Livonia. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Termine. I also want to thank you for the extra aerial view that you provided. I think that was helpful to the presentation.
Thank you.
Is there any questions for our planning staff? Mr. Ventura?
Mark, so is there an actual site plan, engineered site plan for this property?
Engineered, no. I would, at least I would say no, because it's, doesn't appear to have, have been based on a, an ALTA survey or any type of boundary survey. So bear in mind that, that we are estimating some of the information here, like the setbacks from, from Six Mile Road.
That was, because I was, when I was at the site, I found no corner stakes at all. So I was, I was having a hard time getting my bearings there. So we don't even know if this is actual or not. It's just kind of hypothetical.
Well, we do know the addition most certainly encroaches into the setback. The extent of what the, of what the variance would have to be there and exactly what that setback would be, we, we don't have that information. So again, we're estimating, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for our planning staff? Mrs. Smiley.
Mine was more about the landscaping. Is, is that the landscape plan that you have up there right now?
Yes, this was provided with the site data. So it provides some, some limited information on landscaping. And there was discussion regarding this at the study session, and the petitioner acknowledged that the landscape plan needed work.
So they're going to come back with that? Is it a callback or?
It would either, if, it would be treated as a callback item that, you know, this is, planning commission would determine whether to treat it as a callback or, or wait until you get...
Or table it till you have more information?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Smiley. Any other questions for our planning staff? Seeing Mr. Ventura? Thank you.
Mark, has the petitioner provided you with the material samples or any specifics?
I do not have that, but maybe he does. I'm not sure if he's got a sample board. Whether or not you have a sample board?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll get that in one second. Anything else, Mr. Ventura? Ah, we do have a sample board. Okay. And we'll, we'll get into the details of that in one moment. Is there anything else for our planning staff?
And I just want to, want to be clear that there is no landscape plan at the present time.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Mrs. Smiley?
And then the handicap parking thing, was that addressed? I'm having trouble with my iPad.
You know, there's been no change to the plan regarding barrier-free parking. That, that is something that is reviewed by the inspection department when, and if the plans get to that point, they'll determine the appropriate number, as well as the location of the barrier-free spaces, based on the, the, the entrance to the store and other issues and, you know, other important factors like the provision for ramp and that sort of thing. So we appreciate the concern expressed by the Traffic Bureau. I'm not sure whether a second space is needed in this case or not. Again, that's something that would be reviewed by the inspection department.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions for planning? I don't see anything else. All right, our petitioners are here. Good evening, Nasser.
Good evening. My name is Nasser.
All right. Name and address?
Nasser Shakir from NC Designers, 3241 South Telegraph, Dearborn.
Thank you.
I'm here to answer any question regarding the, the parking, the handicap parking. I think we, I mean, one is sufficient for a small site like that, but in terms of moving it towards the sidewalk, I mean, like for safety reasons, I mean, we are willing to do so. I mean, regarding the building inspector, that they're referring to the restrooms, we are willing to put another, if needed, another, after we do the calculations. It's true that we see it's, it depends on the occupancy that we put on the plan... It's true that we see it's, it depends on the occupancy that we put on the plan, but normally in such a small building like this, we don't, occupancy is less than fourteen occupant. So, it's not needed to have two restrooms, but if the building department insisted, we are willing to put another restroom. That's no problem. Regarding the landscaping, I was hoping to get you another better landscaping than the one we had, but the landscaping architect did not have sufficient time from the time that we met in the study meeting till now, so I could not get that with me tonight. So, I hope we'll get that resolved to the board expectation.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments that you wanted to make in regards to this plan before we go to questions?
The, the material on the building, that we're not using any EFAS, I mean, very little amount of EFAS, which is the crown on top of the wall. The reason why I'm using it, because it's a lightweight and these walls are not, not machinery, it's a framing wall, so I would like to use something light. The composite material that we're using on the building, it's like a wood look. Also, this is a material that won't fail within time. We're using some limestone panels on the building, and we did agree that we are gonna bring the panels on the side of the building under the window. And we have some aluminum panels, marble panels, silver color on top of the building, which is, would give it, would give the building a modern look, with some steel canopy in front of the, on the front of the elevation and the side, so that would give some shades to the windows and protect people going in and out from snow and rain.
Okay, very good. Thank you for describing the materials. Let's see if we have some questions for you. I believe we probably do. Anyone with questions for our petitioner? Mrs. Smiley.
Did I understand you to say that the limestone is going to go along the base on the north and the south elevations?
I thought it's only where the window is, which is, I can't see that.
I don't know.
That's the south. I mean, if it's needed to be put in the north, that's fine with me. We can do that. No problem.
Okay, are you the owner-operator or?
No, I'm the architect.
Architect, okay. Thank you. Okay, okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, anything else, Mrs. Smiley?
Nope, I was curious about that.
All right, Mrs., Mr. Bonjero.
Lo, do you have a site plan, an actual site plan of the property?
You mean a survey?
Yeah.
Okay. This, we, we do have a survey, and that site plan is taken out of a survey, but if you're looking for the pins on the property, they're about six inches in the grass on the four corners. So, if we bring a surveyor to pull them out, we can go ahead and expose them and show, but I think the, the boundary is where, how, how we extended. It is sufficient, and we are about, corner of the building should be about one foot away from the, from the boundary line exactly.
Just, we don't, you know, typically, we see one with a stamp on it, and it's, it's be, you know, it's, we don't know if this is accurate or not, right? I mean, because how do we know it's not, doesn't show a stamp on it that's authentic?
Oh, the, the drawings?
On the site plan.
Oh, the site plan, yeah, we can, I mean, I can stamp, I mean. But I can provide, Mr. Tormina, the survey that we got from the owner. I mean, they have an existing survey. It's not.
Yeah, it would have been helpful.
A, a new survey. It's an older survey, and it shows the drawing how it is.
Yeah, and are you going to change the drawing to reflect the stone on the ends of the building?
The, yeah, the sides, that we will put some limestone on the bar, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Ventura?
Mr. Nassers?
Yes.
I don't know whether this question is directed to you or to the owner, but we have, and I want to tell you that we're, we're happy to see the change to the station because it sorely needs upgrading.
Yes, sir.
But you were before us for rezoning, and then you were before us for a study session, and both times you were made aware that you were not in conformance of city ordinance with regard to free air.
Yes.
Both times, we were told that it would be rectified.
That's correct.
And as late as four o'clock this afternoon, it had not been.
Absolutely.
Can you explain why?
Yes. So, obviously.
Sir, can you please give your name and address?
My name.
Thank you.
My name is Ali Hamouche, three-three-four-one-one, Six Mile Road, Livonia, Michigan, four-eight-one-five-two.
Thank you, Mr. Mark.
And, yes, I do acknowledge what you said, and the only reason is, first of all, we have a contract with that service that will end very soon with whoever provider for that. You know, I bought that station three years ago, and I wasn't aware of that ordinance that has to be free. You brought her up in the zoning, when we did that rezoning, and I said, yes, we definitely will do it when we do the renovation for the site, because I did not know where we're gonna place that air. Is it going to be on the left, on the right? Is it going to be on the side of the building? So, this is one of the reasons. The second one is, if I have to actually stop the contact with this guy, so I have to pay something for him, and on the other end, I have to buy the equipment to, to provide it as a, as a free service, which is, I totally acknowledge that, but it's, it's just going to take some time in order to obey to this ordinance. So, I'm not saying I'm not going to do it, but it's just for the fact, how is the plan, site plan is going to end, because eventually, if I don't do this, what you're requesting is, nothing will pass, which is, I agree a hundred percent. But I did not know which side of the building we're going to put it, and plus, how are we going to solve that issue with the provider of that air machine? And I can't stop it. If you, if you, if you feel you want, you don't want it there, I just can't stop it. That doesn't, it's not going to hurt me. I mean, the entire of this, it makes forty-five dollars at the end of the month. I can't stop it, if it makes you feel better.
Well.
And I know, I, I understand where you're coming from, a hundred percent, but I just, there are rules that I'm trying to follow, and I, I need to also acknowledge with the rules of the city, but this is where I'm at. You know, they're an existing contract. I need to talk to the guy. This is what's happening. And also relocating that, that machine, this is where, where I'm at right now.
Probably it's going to be moved from that corner because we have a handicap, so now we're reorganizing the parking lot. So, I guess it would be on the other side of the building, because that spot is going to be for the handicap next to the sidewalk, so he have to move irrelevant now or later. He's going to be removing that pump from that side. Plus, he have a contract with the company, so that machine, it does not belong to him. So, he have to buy, to buy his own.
Yes.
That generate.
The air.
The air.
Yeah.
Without the combs.
I appreciate your comments, and it, it strikes me as though, between the time that you were before us for the rezoning and now you've had sufficient time to speak to your contractor and rectify this.
I.
And, and it's not our position to say that you have to provide air or where it's going to be located. That's totally up to you.
Yes.
It is our position that we require you to conform with city ordinance, and that's what, part of what we do here.
Yes.
Okay. So, you're correct. I would not support approval of your petition until it's fixed.
Okay. I mean, absolutely. I, for that rezoning meeting, I, I take the ownership that I misunderstood. I thought that once we start the renovation, we're going to correct that, and I have the time in order to correct it when I do the renovation. So, as I said, if it makes all the, our, our colleagues here that to stop this, I can't stop it until we resolve it, but this is my situation. You know, I'm not opposing that, but it was, in my end, I misunderstood what you meant at the zoning, that if this has to be resolved during the renovation or immediately.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamouche. Any other questions for the architect or for the property owner?
Mr. Chair, I've got, I've got a couple of questions. I had written down bathrooms, so I'm glad that came up in the, in the, in documents there. My question would be more to, is, is there an air conditioning unit on the ground behind the, behind the building?
Yes.
And what, what happens to that? Where's that go?
No, if that stays, I mean, we're not touching the existing system, because that system is, it's not a rooftop unit. So, I think you have a furnace and an AC unit, so it's not a rooftop unit. If he is wishing to, if he wishes to put a rooftop unit, I'm going to be placing that unit on the new addition, which have a flat roof, not on the building that have an existing gable roof and.
Yeah, I thought, I thought that you'd mentioned, and, and I could have this confused with another, with another petition. I thought, we, we talked about the, the utilities being upstairs behind that.
Compressors, compressors. I think you have a compressor, if I'm not mistaken, for the cooler, but not an AC unit, I believe. The, the cooler, walking cooler, they have a, a fan in the inside, and there is a compressor on the outside. So, that compressor, I believe it's on the, on the, isn't it?
Let me, let me correct that.
Okay.
So, the mechanical parts, as far as the heating and cooling, is behind the building, and also the compressor behind the one. There is nothing set. Yeah, there's nothing on the roof. The roof, whatever, whatever fan they have is an existing where it was back in the days, it used to be a subway. And, or they have existing fans or whatever from before that doesn't exist anymore.
That can be removed.
Yeah, this all can be removed.
And probably a satellite, but the system, the satellite system, because I, I noticed something up there.
Yeah.
That's why I said the screening, it would look nice to cover the back of the building plus any mechanical equipment on the roof. So, it doesn't have to be necessarily the HVAC unit.
I, I, I just, just with that, this, this, this petition is lending itself to being, to me, incomplete as a presentation here tonight. There's a bunch of things. Landscape's not right, this, this, this AC unit, something's going on the roof, it's not going on the roof. So, there's a lot of things here that seem incomplete to me. What's going to happen with the wood, the firewood that's stacked outside the, outside the window? What's going to happen? Are we going to, are you going to discontinue selling firewood there? What happens with that going forward?
For the firewood?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, what's, what's the city ordinance says? I mean, do, do I have to discontinue? I mean.
I, I, I think there's, I think there's language that you don't, you don't sell any product outside the store, so you've got firewood there, you've got ice machine outside, you've got newspaper stand outside. So, there's a lot of things here that I think need to be better thought out before I can approve this petition.
Okay, so, the firewood, of course, I will take it out if it's needed. The ice machine will figure out something else, but as far as the newspaper, this is also cannot be outside for the, for the early people to come in. They, I don't open twenty-four hours. They have to have something in order to, to put their newspaper, which is, they come around between two and four or five, that we don't open at that time.
Yeah, and, and I don't mean to be specific to you with the, with these things, because I looked across the street, the mobile, I think he's selling firewood too, so. But you're asking for a redo here, and I think those are, those are things we really don't need to see stacked up on the, on the front sidewalk, so it's my opinion at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Care Magna. Any other questions, comments for the petitioner? I don't see anyone else on the commission with any comments. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item. Again, I'll go back to the commission. Is there anyone with any comments? If not, a petition is in order, or, excuse me, a motion is in order.
Ian.
Yes, Mr. Bonjero.
I just feel like, I agree with Sam, it's an incomplete application, because I think we're just missing a lot of information. We all like it, you know, it's great, great, you know, definitely needs it, it's a great improvement, but I think there's just so much information missing. Site plan, incomplete blueprint, you know, a, a plan for the mechanicals, the air, and for me, I'm just struggling with, with tonight, you know.
Yes.
Because I don't know what we're voting on. We don't have actual things that we're actually voting on. So, that would be my feeling.
Okay, so, it sounds like you're asking for a tabling. Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Bonjero has asked for a tabling motion. You would move it to the next, our next study meeting? Is that would be adequate time?
That's not. There's room on the agenda. The question, I think, would be to the petitioner, how much time they would need to revise the plans.
Okay. To the petitioner, do you think that you would be able to come back to our next study meeting, which would be next week, correct, Mr. Tormina?
Correct.
Would that give you adequate time, or do you need additional time?
No, that's.
That would be adequate, okay. Is there support for the motion to table?
Support.
We have a motion to table to our next study meeting by Mr. Bonjero, supported by Mrs. Smiley. There is no discussion on tabling motions. If the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Care Magna votes aye. Chair will show.
Votes aye. Motion has been tabled. We'll see you at our next study meeting, and we'll continue this.
Okay.
Thank you. We will move on to the pending items section of our agenda. Item number five next.
Petition two thousand nineteen dash one-one dash zero-eight dash one-five submitted by Hobbs and Black Architects on behalf of two-four-two Community Church, requesting approval of all plans required by Section eighteen point five-eight of the City of Livonia, zoning ordinance number five-four-three as amended. In connection with the proposal to renovate the exterior of the church located three-five-four-seven-five Five Mile Road located on the south side of Five Mile between Yale and Levan in northeast section, quarter of Section twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Tormina?
Well, we spent quite a bit of time at the study meeting looking at various options that were provided by the applicant on mostly involving the building materials and the color schemes, and I think the Planning Commission landed on option number three, which this is a rendering of, provided by the petitioner this evening, an updated rendering. So, with that, Mr. Chair, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know the pastor is here, and he'll be able to enlighten us as to whether or not there are any other changes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tormina. Again, this item was also tabled at our last meeting. So, can we get a motion to remove this from the table?
So moved.
By Mr. Long, supported by.
Support.
Mr. Ventura. Again, if there's no objection, we can show six to remove this item from the table.
Done.
No objections, so we can now discuss this item. The pastor is here. He's welcome to come forward and give us any additional information. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Eric Rock with two-four-two Community Church. Thank you for your thorough overview. Mr. Tormina is correct. What we're presenting here tonight is the renderings that we looked at last week at the study session, and I believe came to a consensus too with those colors, so it offers the, the deeper red and blue colors that we discussed last week. Other updates that were made going into that study session was the soft and fascia coming in at a, a dark gray color there, as you see previously. That was a brighter red color, so we've muted those tones as a reminder, along with keeping the bookended natural stone as it is now, adding a little bit of wood feature there to kind of tie it all together. But those are the changes to the front facade. We're very happy with the look of it, very much appreciate the input from the Planning Commission, and, and that's what we're here for tonight. Any questions? Be glad to answer those.
Thank you, Pastor Rock. For Mrs. Smiley's benefit, I don't think you were at our study meeting. We did have a lengthy discussion. The, the church had given us a, a variety of options, color options, and we debated those, what our preferences were, and this was, seemed to be the general consensus, so we'll certainly look to see if you have any, any thoughts on it as well, because we want to make sure we have everyone's input. Do we have any questions for our petitioner? Any comments? Nothing? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against? No one's rushing forward?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Well, with that, if there is no other discussion, then we will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Care Magna.
I've got a question more than a motion.[1766.82]
I've got a question more than a motion.
Feel free.
I can't even make it because I can't, my computer's not working. But who was in the, uh, who was on the front page of the paper from two-four-two church the other day, Livonia paper? Did I see somebody?
Oh...
An article?
I'm not aware of it. You may have. Uh, likely if it's in Livonia, it'd be our campus pastor there, Bobby Francis, so...
Okay, I think you had front page coverage here, uh, not too long ago. I, and I, and I don't remember. I kind of glanced at it, didn't read it, but, uh, apparently, welcome to Livonia, right? And, uh, but we got consensus on a, on a plan here, so it's good.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Karen Magna. Uh, any other comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Long?
I'd like to offer an approving resolution.
You're welcome to.
All right, too. Um, that the request to renovate the exterior of two-four-two Community Church located at three-five-four-seven-five Five Mile Road is hereby approved, subject to city council approval in the following conditions. Number one, that the north elevation plan identified as sheet number A two-hundred dated November eighth, two thousand nineteen, prepared by Hobbs and Black Architects, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to, except for the fact that existing stone walls on either side of the entrance shall not be painted. Number two, that the colors of the building materials shall conform to the rendering identified as option three, viewed from Five Mile North dated December twentieth, two thousand nineteen. Number three, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. Number four, that no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, including but not limited to the building or around the windows. Number five, that the specific plan referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted by the, to the inspection department at the time the building permits are applied for. And number six, pursuant to section nineteen point one-zero of ordinance number five-four-three, the zoning ordinance of the City of Livonia, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by city council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there support?
Support.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Long, supported by Mr. Karen Magna. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, uh, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. And Mr. Bonj- uh, Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Chairman Wolschow?
Votes aye. Motion passes, and we'll go on to city council. Congratulations, and we wish you luck on your project. Welcome to the community again. Thank you. Uh, with that, we are now going to circle back to the public hearing section of our agenda for item number two.
And that is petition two thousand nineteen dash one-two dash zero-two dash one-six submitted by Center Management Services, Inc., requesting waiver use approval pursuant to section nineteen point zero-six of the City of Livonia zoning ordinance number five-four-three as amended to operate a full-service restaurant, Chipotle Mexican Grill, at thirteen thousand nine hundred Middle Belt Road, located on the northeast corner of Middle Belt and Schoolcraft Roads, in the southwest quarter of section twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. Again, this is a request to operate a full-service restaurant, uh, Chipotle Mexican Grill, at the northeast corner of Middle Belt and Schoolcraft Roads. Uh, this site, uh, includes, well, is the wester- westerly half of the Aldi site, which was developed in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, that overall parcel area is about three point five acres with two hundred and eighty-six feet of frontage on, uh, school, on Middle Belt Road and about five hundred feet of frontage on Schoolcraft. Uh, the entire parcel, as you can see from this map, is zone C two, general business. Uh, the Aldi store measures about twenty-two thousand, uh, square feet overall, and is on the easterly part of the site, uh, located closer to Middle Belt Road. On the west part, uh, will be a five thousand and fifty-square-foot multi-tenant retail building. This building has not yet been constructed. Uh, the proposed, uh, Chipotle is classified as a full-service restaurant because it would have more than thirty customer seats. Uh, the proposed restaurant would have forty-four interior seats, as well as a small outdoor dining patio with twelve customer seats. Uh, Chipotle would occupy, uh, two units, which are at the south end of the building. Uh, this space measures about two thousand four hundred and eighty-six square feet, and represents about one-half of the leasable area of that retail building. No other tenants have been identified at this time, uh, for the remaining part of the building, which could accommodate either one or two tenants. Uh, floor plan was submitted with the application that shows the layout of the seating, uh, the kitchen, food preparation area, storage, as well as the, uh, restrooms. In terms of parking, uh, this is based on the, uh, both the Aldi store as well as the multi-tenant retail center. They were, uh, designed to operate under a cross-access and shared parking agreement. Aldi requires a total of ninety-nine parking spaces. For the restaurant, the required parking would be twenty-eight spaces, and then for the remaining, uh, space, we're estimating fourteen parking spaces. This brings the total required parking to one hundred and forty-one spaces, and the plan shows a hundred and forty-four spaces. Uh, there would be no modifications to the building. This is what the building was, uh, site planned approved previously to look like. Uh, Chipotle would be occupying what would be the right side, uh, of the, uh, the building, and then in terms of signage, uh, the, the restaurant would be allowed one wall sign, uh, based on one square foot of, um, of area for each linear foot of, uh, of, of storefrontage. Uh, they would also have, uh, an opportunity to locate on the monument sign that was approved as part of the site plan. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I can read out the correspondence?
Yes, please.
Letter dated December nineteenth from our engineering division reads, "The proposed building pad is currently serviced by public water main and sanitary sewer, as well as private storm sewer. The submitted drawings do not indicate any calculations for the proposed construction, but the development was planned for with the original Aldi construction. A full review of the proposed development will be completed when plans are submitted for permitting. It should be noted that should the developer need to do any work within the Middle Belt Road right of way, permits will need to be obtained from the Wayne County Department of, uh, of Public Services." That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter of no objection coming from the Fire Marshal, Greg Thomas, dated, uh, December twenty-third. A letter from our inspection department dated January seventh that reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed, and the following is noted. Number one, a variance from the zoning board of appeals would be required for the deficient number of parking spaces proposed. I'll note that that was corrected with the, uh, reduction in, in customer seating. And number two, no signage has been reviewed at this time. This department has no further objections to this petition." Uh, that letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. Next is a letter of no objection coming from the, uh, Traffic Bureau, uh, signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant, and dated December twentieth. Uh, next is a letter of no objection from the Department of Finance, dated December nineteenth, and signed by Connie Campula. And then lastly, a letter of no objection, uh, from our Office of the Treasure, uh, dated December twenty-third, and signed by Linda Schill, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions for our planning staff? I don't see any questions. Good evening, sir.
Thank you. Good evening.
Welcome. Uh, is there anything else that you would like to, uh, add from what we've already... Of course, we need your name and address for our record.
Excuse me. My name is Thomas Costello, uh, three-four-one-two Old Woodward, Birmingham, Michigan.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. Uh, anything else that you'd like to add from what you've already heard from Mr. Toramina?
I think it's a good, accurate, uh, representation. Uh, we like Chipotles. They're a great use. Uh, it's kind of a mark for the former Chichis that was there. We still kept, uh, Mexican restaurant flavor for those. Uh, but it, it's a good use, a solid tenant, and, uh, that's what we would like to be able to do, and we enjoy working with the, uh, uh, people of Livonia. It's a great city that is, uh, doing a good job. And I just looked at the other, uh, developments coming in, and it's nice to see that. Uh, my first time in Livonia, I sat next to Ed McNamara, who drove me around, showed me all the good developments, and said, these are the type things you want, they want, we want to see in the city, and if you do that, you won't have any problems. And, uh, I think that has carried through with the life of the city and the able people that have been here.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. It's a nice, uh, thing to hear. Ed McNamara's name again. I haven't heard that in a while, so, thank you. Uh, I don't think, uh, Chipotle's gonna be serving Chichi's famous margaritas, though, are they?
No.
Okay. Uh, do we have any questions for our petitioner? Any questions, comments?
Uh, just a comment. I will, I will, I will thank you for the, the illustration of the, of the tables and chairs outdoors with the rail around it. Something we asked for at the, uh, at the study session, and this, this helps me understand, uh, the concept of what it'll look like, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magna. Any other questions or comments? I don't hear any. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Don't see anybody rushing forward on this item e- either, so, uh, if there is no further questions or comments, uh, you don't have any, uh, additional, uh, comments, Mr. Costello, that you would like to make?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, in that case, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ventura?
Offer an approving resolution. That the request to operate a full-service restaurant, Chipotle Mexican Grill, at thirteen nine hundred Middle Belt Road is hereby approved, subject to city council approval in the following conditions. Number one, that the site plan identified as SP, dated January sixth, twenty twenty, prepared by Design Associates, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, that the petitioner provide the city with appropriate documentation, verifying the existence of cross statement and cross access agreement, I'm sorry, existence of cross parking and cross-access agreement between the Aldi store and the retail building. Number three, that the landscape plan identified as L one, dated January third, twenty twenty, as revised, prepared by Vert Verde Landscape Architecture, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number four, that the maximum number of customer seats will not exceed a total of forty-four interior seats and twelve outdoor patio seats. Number five, that no advertising shall be permitted on any of the seating or table apparatus within the outdoor patio area. Uh, number six, that unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising, such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsored vehicles designed to attract attention of passing motorists, shall be prohibited. Number seven, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approved by the zoning board of appeals. Number eight, that no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on the site, including but not limited to the building or around the windows. Number nine, that plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time of application for the certificate of occupancy. And finally, pursuant to section nineteen dot ten of ordinance number five-four-three, the zoning ordinance of the City of Livonia, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of the approval by the city council. And unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Is there support?
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Ventura, supported by Mr. Karen Magna. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. If the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
And Chairman Wolschow?
Votes aye. Motion passes, and we wish you good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming this evening. And that takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the commission? We have, ah, of course. Always the backside. There we go. Thank you, Mrs. Smiley. Uh, we do have one item left, which is our minutes.
Of the one thousand one hundred and fifty-second public hearing regular meeting held by the planning commission on December tenth, two thousand and nineteen.
And I believe all members were present for that. So if that's the case, uh, is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve the minutes.
And support?
Support.
All right, we got a motion by Smiley, supported by Long. Uh, if there's no objection, I think we can show six on the approval of the minutes. No objections were heard, so we will mark those approved. And now we're at the end of our agenda, both sides. Uh, is there any other business to come before the commission? Hearing none. If, uh, there is no other business, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I move we adjourn?
By Mrs. Smiley, supported by...
Support.
We got a lot of support for the...
Everyone.
We'll go with Mr. Bonjero on that one. And, uh, again, if there's no objections, I think we can show six on the motion to adjourn, which takes us to the end of our agenda. I'd like to thank the Livonia Television staff for their contribution to our meeting tonight. And if there's no further business to come before the planning commission, which there is not, we will adjourn our meeting at eight twenty-five PM. Uh, thank you, and good night, Livonia.